Jamesstown City Council, 9/18/2024 is now called the order. Everyone's had a minute to look at the minutes. Terry, do you have a prayer, please?
Hey, Father, we thank you for a beautiful day with beautiful sunshine. We thank you for the many blessings that you give us, Lord. We pray that you be with us tonight as council and the mayor. The decisions we make, Lord, be pleasing you and within your will. Thank you for preaching, everyone's here. Be with our law enforcement, our firefighters, be with the government of the United States, Lord, it's for sure. If ever this country needed help, it's now. Forgive us for we failed, lead the God and practice in all things. Amen.
I pray that it leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody's had time to look over the minutes from the last meeting. I mean, motion for just minutes, please?
Motion to approve.
Second. On favor, media posts. First thing we have on the agenda tonight is a proclamation that we received. They ask for us to do this through the general aviation appreciation month. So Tyler has that, that he'll read.
Where Jamesstown City thinks it's significant in its continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation education institutions, aviation organizations, and community airports. General aviation in Williston Airport has significant economic impact to the city of Jamesstown where it's a cross-border house Cooper study. Contribution of general aviation to the US economy in 2018 by the general aviation air force and state supported annual business revenues more than $2 billion, $11 million jobs and payroll pop for 99 million. Whereas according to the Kentucky Department of Aviation, the state has 57 public use airports. These airports serve more than 7,500 pilots and more than 2,600 registered aircraft. According to the FAA, the state can own 47 repair stations, three FAA approved pilot schools, almost 1,600 student pilots, and almost 1,300 flight instructors. Whereas general aviation not only supports Kentucky's economy and improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, disaster relief, investments in sustainable fuels and technologies, investments in innovative experimental technology like vertical takeoff and landing vehicles, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quick, man safely. Whereas the United States faces shortage of aviation professional leaders should invest in the critical infrastructure to ensure future economic growth and their next generation of aviation professionals. Whereas the national celebration of J. Flower, the Washington DC commemorates the last 85 years of general aviation, and they even got that anniversary for founding of Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. Now they're for Virginia and Mayor of the city of Jamestown to do here by May 24, May 2024 as general aviation appreciation month.
Okay, second thing we've got on the agenda is sell property. And what this is, we have a couple lots that we have an interest in. People want to buy them. First one is, and I met with Shelley, with PCS Realty, I believe it is. She had called me and I met with her. She's interested in the property up here right beside her, the two buildings, the one that we just bought last year from June and Virginia Ryder. And her thoughts on that property is that she is wanting to put a business in there. She said she's thought of different things. I think she's working on one of the buildings that she has now. And the other building, she has supposedly plans for all three of those buildings. So I guess what we need to talk about or think and decide is, are we interested in selling that property? If we are, is it, we sell it, you know, with the intent that she's going to put a business in there? That it's not just, you know, that not possible or is there any kind of stipulations? With it being a property that the city bought to make sure to develop something in the city?
What other building does she have besides the one she's developing right now? She says both buildings.
Well, one of these would be Sarah's.
Sarah's parking lot.
That's what the county has to be in the lot part of.
Where Sarah's was. Of course, we still own where the parking lot is. And there's kind of been a, we're not really sure where the lines lay or where the cutoff is, how that property lays. We probably have to eventually do a survey to know for sure. Because we know we own that property, but we don't know how for sure that it runs as far as the lines and stuff. The property on this side of the block wall where the people are parking, that would still be the city's. If we took that block long down and kept it, that would all be the city's. But, you know, we have somebody interested in. She says she intends to put a business there. So we just need to let her know something on that property. So whatever your thoughts are on that.
I'm all for selling if she's going to start a business. But, you know, I mean, are we looking at me or her? Three years, five years, 10 years, 20 years of, you know, some kind of assurance?
It's not a speculation they'll do, is it? Or should we be speculating to buy it to pre-sale? Because she has somebody else.
Yeah.
Right.
How she is in the real estate business.
Exactly, yeah, that's what I'm saying is that, you know, because the city's agenda when we buy that property is to promote the city as they're put a business in or be it, you know, but we do have somebody interested in buying it and she says she intends to put a business in there.
There are 3 in a row there. Of course, she's done a lot of work on the hill. The idea four or two.
You're going to guard it from taking?
I think you have, you would have to have it because for the sale of property, then you would have to have, there's always certain things you can transfer property with, with or without compensation. And it's for economic development, so, you know, a new business wouldn't be that. But I'm, maybe someone need to talk with the case. You know, I'm not exactly sure exactly how that wording is, but that is, that's one of the things you can pass on for is economic development to sell the property, otherwise you have to, I think it's public auction or, or sales bids on, it's just like, you know, get rid of vehicles and stuff.
Rules behind what you can do, what you can't. Of course, I'm not, wait, that's something like he said, we have to deal with HK. But then on the other hand, when you write a contract, you know, if you're selling something, you put whatever you want to in contract as far as if you've got stipulations and both people sign off on it, you know, that can just be done in a contract of sale.
Or is a survey buyer should have paid for the survey?
And you can attach that to the deed if you decide to. Then that's by the courthouse, you know, you can make an exhibit as part of the deed. So that's just, so I think just from what we're saying right now, we need to get with HK and find out for sure if that's something we can do and we have a stipulation, do you all want to put a certain time? Or do you want to just say that it's to already be used for a business? What do you want in there? Or you want to wait till we talk to HK and then, you know, she's asked. It's been, she's been waiting a little while so we can.
Yeah, she's, I mean, if she's sincere about wanting to build something, I'm all for it, you know. I am too, but I want some kind of assurance that it's not going to, I mean.
Not rolled over for profit.
10 years down the road, I mean, we may, somebody may come in here a couple of years, you know, looking for a place to build a business and we done promised that, and she may be looking 10 years down the road. So that's, that's what I want to say is that you can be a reasonable amount of time.
So how much time do you all think is reasonable?
Well, I don't know, two, three years. I would think three at most.
Three years.
I mean, that's like, you know, that's maybe.
Within three years, I mean, that's just something, if we're going to put a stipulation, then you've got to put what your stipulation is. So if we're going to say within three years, you've got to, but, I mean.
You can always, you can always do it toward the, she would have to be the one to construct the building. And if she doesn't construct the building, then it reverts back to the city. That's a part of the price that we sell to her for.
Or just that she can't sell it?
Exactly, anybody else, then it would revert back to the city.
We done this once with the Fire Commission, then we can do that. We beat it over properly, then they'll build on it and they did it back. Want to remember that it's been, Terry was.
I think we just get this point and deal with HK and say, this is what the council wants. If we're going to sell it, this is what they feel like to do. So how does it need to be written out or what kind of? And if that's all made, then are you all at the price of what the city has in? What we paid for plus whatever expense we have?
Or expenses have been incurred.
Whatever cost that the city has.
And claim that's in such as.
Okay, so we'll give them HK on that. Second property is this one down here that the city bought off Jack Hudson. Janet Tucker is interested in buying that building, or that lot, to put a building on, to put a little store in there. Now, since this came up, I talked to Tyler a little bit about it. And the reason that the city bought that property to start with is because there's a main sewer line that runs through there. So if we were to sell that, there would have to be an easement put in there for somebody to feed, for the city to have access to that sewer line. Would you sell 15 feet on each side is what you thought?
Yeah, I, I don't remember how deep that was, Jim. It's pretty deep, so it may, it may be a little bigger on that one. But normally it's 30 foot, 15, you know, 15 from center is what they normally do.
A 30 foot easement?
Yeah, I'll check and see if I can, I'll, we can check that first man over right there across the road in the parking lot right there. And we'll get a depth on it right there because it's shallow. The further it gets out of the bronchial, I know it's more shallow. But it's deep, right there, that first man over across on this side. Give it some ballpark or whatever. I think it's worth it, 4 feet, 4 feet. You bench it 4 feet, every 4 feet? Play it so this.
Yeah.
I think it's a 10.
So I, I think if we're interested in selling that, the same, kind of as to what the cost of what the city has in it, I'm not sure what we can clean up away. But we'd have to get all that together. And I think we would need to go down and mark where the easement would be and have them go look at it and say, this is what has to happen. Are you still interested in it? Because we have to have an easement for that, for that main sewer line.
What's, if they've ever been surveyed, I don't need to know where the boundaries are.
I don't either, Tony. It's, it's hard to tell because there's a creek over here and then there's the, the main road. It's hard to tell how far back it goes or.
It's what I would have, have deep off the road, you know, so.
And of course, I can pull the deed, have to look at it. But normally a deed will just be a legal description. It won't care how big it is or how much property. Most of them don't, most of them just a legal description. But we'll check on that. But if, are you all in agreement to sell it? If all those are made and they're still interested with that easement and we get the price of what it is for a business?
I'm all for selling if she's going to put a business on it.
So we'll just write her kind of the status. Okay, so.
I'm all for selling, we're not going to sell it to you, but I just want to, because that's on the square here, you know, I just want to make some sure that it's not going to sit there vacant for 10 years before she decides to do it.
Right. Okay, so with, I think the next thing is to get with HK, buy out the regulations on the city selling the property and then document, maybe have him to decide how that we need to do with that. And then if you need to get that marked down here at this property, find out where the easement would have to be. And then I guess we need to try to, maybe that probably, they probably will survey that you know, it's a hard call for who's going to buy it and will survey, so.
What's, you know, I just threw out three years there on the timeframe. I mean, does that sound reasonable, right? Or is it?
I was thinking more along the 2 myself because, by the way, if she's going to do, if she's going to do something, she's going to do something in the next year probably anyway, definitely within 2, I would think.
What are your thoughts?
So I'm just thinking, if she buys it, I mean, it's, it's hers.
Well, you can put stipulations in there, though. With it being a city, the city selling a property is.
Well, you said there had to be a stipulation of it. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Economic development, yeah.
Yeah.
Which it would then to build a business.
Right. But that, if you put that in there, then that covers the city selling it. Plus it gives you that, that, you know, you're selling for that reason.
And if she didn't make a move within that two or three years to start building a business, then it would, you know, come back to us and.
Oh, I understand all that, it's just, she made it sound like open, play music when you have tables or something, you know, where's that covered?
But where, if it came back to us at the same price that we.
Right.
Sign it.
Yeah. Well, while we're on property, I talked to Tyler about it. First bad just to have a survey done, where they tore down the old Henry House and everything. And they found, the survey found an alley that comes off of it, comes over to the street there that comes up to the firehouse and all that.
Does it deal with the water tank?
Well, it's a different alley totally. And they used a big manhole in the middle of it. Well, it would make if they ever decide, church decides to build a rec center where they're going to build one, it would make another entrance in for the church. But if you went up to the city, I reckon to develop that street, wouldn't it?
Is that a city street?
It's a city alleyway.
Are we sure it's not the same alley that HK knows about it? It goes up the hill behind the church.
No, this one comes right off the street, goes right behind Brooks Bay's house.
It could be an easement running off the city station.
Right toward the church.
Oh, okay.
Comes off the street, backs up to Brooks, backs up, one side's on Brooks, one side's on that little white house.
You know, we've done more than all the time, don't we?
Well, it's something about whenever that the city was first provided up or something, it was logged up. I mean, everyone, hundreds of years ago.
Is it showing it's an alley or it's an easement?
An alley.
An alley.
Other ones that runs, very high, it's an alley that was sported.
You'd be right, and then building the, probably going down, telling her to be.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Yeah. He says it was part of the old, or the original Jamesstown subdivision, is what he called it.
Well, I've got a map.
I can't see it, I'm spinning my head.
But I've got a map, it should be on it.
It's marked off, they deflagged it all, everything.
But they agreed to do something there?
Possibly.
Okay.
I could actually ask about if the city would fix that to where it was able to be used as an access point. And what had to be done, if the city wanted it.
Okay.
I mean, that's, if there's a, if there's a land on the level of it, that's kind of tough for someone. So, I mean, you know, it's not like we can build on top of it. And I can't see, but I don't make the decision coming up. I can't see, you know, that's to build a road. I don't know how, how long are you talking, but you're talking thousands or thousands of dollars. I mean, you know, full, you know, 2x repayment on some of these roads, 30, 40, $50,000. I couldn't imagine what the cost of building, you know, building it would be. But it could be, I mean, I, if, just like we said on the last time, that may be something they could need over to, if somebody else wanted, you know, to do that as a private drive or something.
But could you build a private company or private, Neil? Could they build a road, build a drive through there? It's free for me, it'd be the city, because that way it's built to your own specification.
That's what I'm saying, it would be a private drive, it wouldn't be a road. I mean, to be a road, for us to take a road in, you would have to build it. I think they're 20 foot wide, 20 foot wide, 2 foot, uh, 2 foot on each side. Or chip, I think that's what the ordinance reads, I'm not, I'm pretty sure. And then we take it in, once it's, once it's built to specification, that's, that you all would take it in as a city street. But it would be on, you know, we would take it in on.
I'm saying, it's a city street.
It's a, it's an alleyway, it's, it's like on a plaque somewhere. A city street would have to, it would have to be, you know, black often in, in the system. It's like, that's the beautiful road.
Like up by the Jean's house, there's an old, used to be an old road. There's that water tank that's not getting there. Where it ends no longer in there, it's a city road, am I correct?
It's on, no, it's on.
All on the city street.
You get a street sign as well, or?
Yeah, got a street sign, and I still go right up through there. Well, I guess that's just something we'll have to address as, if it fails for, when they give a review, we'll just have to address that and see what, what we find out about that. If it's, if it's a street, if it's an alley or what, you know. Like Tyler says, there's options also if it's something, if it's, if it's just an alley, I don't even know if you can do it to him like that all.
I don't know how, I don't know how this wrote on the, see, the one that was up there was actually listed as city of Jamestown property. It's not, we have, we have alleyways like in my subdivision. There's two roads that actually cut from, cut across the street. That they were put on the plaque, but they never were developed.
But if somebody wants to put a road in there, they could, right?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
I mean, that's if, I'm saying the property owner.
That was done by Donna Wilkson and them, I don't, they, they drove it up her route. But they never, they never built the road when they sold the properties off. So, I mean, that, that means a legal question.
Fall back on the developer?
Yeah, I got, I got no idea how it works.
Or is, if that's the problem, they have to develop, they have to fall back on the developer?
I mean, if it was, if it's all listed, I mean, you listed, just like the one on the water tank, I mean, you know, it was listed as city of Jamestown property. Through the PDA and everything.
Yeah, I mean, a deed. But that's something we'll just have to ask this Moose Board. See why that's probably going to be again, an HK question as to what it is and how it's looked at when something just comes up.
They would face them whenever the survey is done. At some point, whether it's a parking lot or whether it's a building that's available there, they would probably need to provide access.
Okay, so we'll just ask that Moose Board, and we'll just, that's something we'll have HK check it out, see what, what our options are.
I'll even, it needs to be light, doctor, it can just be very wild.
So it goes from Cumberland to Shelby?
Shelby, that's what.
I think so, but that's Ballard that goes up the hill to the firehouse. Tees in there on Shelby.
Yes, Shelby, so does this one run from, where's?
It comes right off of Ballard and just straight toward the church.
Oh, Ballard, comes to the church.
In behind.
It's not.
Between, between the houses there?
Yeah.
Is it, before you broke?
That's it.
There's the, 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 the.
Thirteenth and Ninth.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, Thurston's old house.
Yeah. Goes right between them and the land, I was sitting on there, I don't know about the top.
Okay.
I'm still, that's, 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 that's.
And room.
I have, I want to, I want to find the yard. I want to have everybody.
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's enough room for that, you know, whenever deemed they're, you know. I was probably studying those with, I don't know. Yeah, I'm not, I'm sure.
Okay, we're going to move on. We'll address that as it comes up when we, when we find out something there. Something we're going to do, we have some, some of our volunteer fire department here. We've got, do you see any of them? We have some, I think, that's been here quite a while and probably need some kind of, to be recognized, so. We have. We're going to let Tony call these off. Tony, who's the chief of fire department, if you know who he is, Tony. I was trying, I was going to say, we don't ever.
No, I was there at 32, that's a few more.
So.
In recognition of dedicated service of the Jamestown Fire Department, my, my, 10 years of service, my. What year is your dog?
Uh, about 13 or 14.
Well, he keeps doing these in increments of five. So you've been there long enough for 10, not long enough for 15 years. But I knew you'd been there longer than 10.
I'm going to stay up here, Michael will get everybody in and get pictures.
Been a bunch. We have, in recognition of dedicated service, Jamestown Fire Department, for 15 years of dedicated service. You're welcome. Are you, you're about 10, right?
Actually, 20 years.
Is it 20?
I didn't do it yet. You get that all, yeah.
To the little pro.
Philip Anderson, in recognition of your dedicated service for 40 years.
Hey, so if you start too, in case you want to come down.
Hold it outside. What you want me to do, smile.
Just smile.
Okay, in recognition of dedicated service to the Jamestown Fire Department for 40 years, Junior Malone. And to Chief Jeff Landers, in recognition of your dedicated service for 40 years.
And I know you don't realize sometimes what these guys do, but it's all the time and it's all volunteer. I seen a post on the Facebook this week, it said, if you see any firemen or people out that in your community thankful for what they do because, you know, without them volunteering, what would you do? We wouldn't have that service. And I know it's, it's a lot to get up in the middle of an eye. Wherever you're at.
Wherever you're at, actively you can go, but we appreciate.
And I, I can tell you, I know from experience, I mean, uh, city doesn't realize the hours these guys put in. All the training they do, all the maintenance of the building and the fire trucks. Uh, it's... And I know, it's thirty-three minutes, so. It takes a walk, and getting up at two o'clock in the morning, and going to fire, and you gotta be at work at seven o'clock. You know, and you're up the rest of the night.
And they show up, I don't know how many events that, uh, people ask, you know, just for them to show up and, and be present, or to have a fire truck present, or just things that, it requires time to do those things. And it's, it's not something that they're being paid to go do that. It's all out of the goodness of their heart, so we appreciate the guys.
Thank you. I love that whole depth of duty that they're...
I got one.
And recognizing, I don't, eighty years. Those little gray hairs.
We're like Tony. I didn't say Tony.
Okay, just a few things that, uh, I wanna address real quick here. Uh, first of all, we did a donation for Jamestown PTO for one of their, um, events they were having. It's just, um, something to do with reading, I believe, and... And they have sent us, uh, which it was reading across Kentucky, reading across America. And they do something every year when they have these programs at the school. So we did a donation and, and bought a pizza for one of their events. This is just something they've sent us, just a thank you to the city and all the kids in that class signing the back of it. So very nice for them to send that, and then there's some pictures of kids enjoying the pizza. So anyway, just their appreciation for, and we try to support as much as we can and help create things that, you know, and is good events and, and things that they've been supporting, so. So we have that, um, also, if everybody is aware, heavens for kids, conference coming up. That's the twenty-seventh, so that'll be not this weekend, but next weekend. That's at First Baptist, and, uh, always a big event, uh, people show up from everywhere. I see people from Chalmersburg and stuff that, uh, shows up at that event every year when I'm there. But that's coming up, and we just always gonna try to support that. It's big for our kids, when you, uh, see what our kids in Russell County receive compared to what kids in the other counties. People are constantly saying, how do you, how do they do that? How do they have the money for the stuff that they do at the school for these kids? You know, whether it's shoes or clothes, or I think now they added this year, they can also get dental work and stuff done also. So, and without that, in their eyes too, I miss you, I miss you, you've been at in dental. It's a great thing, and, uh, all that money goes to the schools. He doesn't take any of that. It's all dealt here in the county for these kids.
And that's world, world-class entertainers there.
Yes.
I mean, that's unbelievable.
Yeah, yeah, and he does a good job promoting, and, but anyway, anybody that can, that's a good event to attend. There's always a big crowd there, and, you know, it's, it's good for our county, so that's coming up. Uh, also, we have, uh, movie night coming up next Friday night. And of course, it's supposed to cool back off, I think, but, you know, with the end of April, so we wanna try to get one in there. So, uh, next Friday night will be movie night. It'll be a kids' movie. This Saturday, coming up Saturday, is gonna be the opening day for Jamestown Market here in town. This'll be our first one. Of course, they usually start out a little slow at the beginning, you know, with the vendors, because, you know, a lot of people don't, even though if you put it on the radio and it's out, uh, and Facebook and everything, a lot of people still don't know it. Uh, because a lot's times I'll see posts later on, since I wish I'd known it, you know, I don't like to do this, but that's what all you can do. You can put it out there and, you know, and hopefully everybody sees it, but we have that starting Saturday. So, um, hopefully we'll have a good, good show for that, and that helps just, uh, bring people into town. Um, let's see. I think.
What was, did we side pass the sidewalk or something?
Oh, yeah, we did.
Yeah.
I barely felt me tore up this night.
With that blonde, that blonde hair, that bleached blonde hair?
That's me. That's some natural.
Tail natural.
Um, okay, yeah, back to, I'm sorry that I got a little carried away there, the sidewalk there. This is something that we talked a little bit about, where the county is doing the sidewalks over in front of the courthouse. And then we have some sidewalks. Part of that over in that area is city's also. And then we have some other areas that need some sidewalk work. Well, we got, uh, or the county had some bids, I guess, from the guy that is doing the work for the county over there. And during that time, we got bids from that same guy for that area over there. And then for the areas over here on the other side of town, I guess. Situation is, uh, the area that the county's doing runs right into the area that city's doing. It's all right there. We talked about trying to get some bids from somebody in Russell County, which, or, you know, if we can possibly, we'll keep it all, uh, make anything that we can here in the county. But the situation, I think, on this part of it is gonna be, you've got it connecting, and you're gonna have two different people doing the work. So is that feasible to try to get somebody to do that? Or is it more feasible, the guy that's doing that to, to do that area? And then we can look at bids on the other side if we want to. That's up to you all, but just with that being the same area that's connecting to the same, do you want to deserve?
Can it go ahead and have somebody do the whole job that joins there, wouldn't you?
Look a lot better.
You know.
I think so, I mean, I think if that's...
Be more uniform.
I think so too, but.
Cause you get one good pour and that way it's all.
And then, you know, we had...
Is the sidewalk, will we concrete the pavement?
Uh, it's on there, uh, beer.
It's, it's concrete. We're trying to get working with papers altogether. Uh, the bank's gonna redo theirs in front of theirs, so the papers will be gone there. Uh, trying to, the papers that are on this side, he didn't look at those. He just happened to be up there, and I was talking to the bank about doing theirs, and I talked to the slatter while he was there, and he said he could just work something up. He is, he, he didn't wanna put a drain in. It does not drain. There is no drain at all, or it's been covered up. Some one time in that quarter of the courthouse, HK's.
Right there in front of HK.
So, I mean, it's standing in water, so we need to try to, I don't know whether it's move that water to the drain that's on the bank side, or build a drain that, that cuts in behind, maybe HK built it and beat it off the hill that way. Um, but he was, he just had to be over there, and I asked if he shot a bid over to us, so. Yes, they, they could have been this way or whatever.
Yeah, they are, they started the work over there. So that's something we need to think about. Do we want them, while they're doing that, to do that area for the city? Or do we wanna try to get somebody else, or do we want them to do that and then just get bids on the rest of the?
Yeah, that was all that painted area in front of HK, it's like between those two. The papers on the other side of the courthouse that, that be done in the, you know, the, the, that side of the quarry where the sidewalk's done. And then, um, we, we still have some, some papers over on, um, the real job quarry. There's two places out there. That was one thing that, when, when we get, when we get to that one, that's, that's a totally different, uh, pour. But we had those, I guess a tree was in there one time, they had the, the metal around it. I, I did not have to even put that metal back around it because of the water down underneath it and busting the concrete up. I was, if we wanted some kind of green or your shrubbery, I might put a pod or something there, you know, just make one pour out of it, but. Sort of real thing.
Are you talking about there from real job?
Yeah.
Or lady?
Where, probably the lot we was up there.
Wow.
Yeah, and then, well, right on the bottom part, there's papers that come out in the parking lot, and then over, like where you would walk up to, um, Snaps.
Is it most of, most of?
Yeah, when, um, when you walk over there, there's one, one little set of papers is there. Um, and I'm, I'm sort of, sort of hazard, maybe get it outside.
I make a motion for Lex Ladder to do it all.
You mean all?
All of that, that's on the square there, that way it all, it's gonna be one portion of it.
Even the part over here on?
Over for a real job and everything. And what he's in there, he's set up, let him do it, get it done. Instead of moving in two different bunches pour and filling with it. He'll give you a better price for doing it all at one time as well, if you'd have to have somebody else come in and set it up.
He touched the same guy down the Maggity Church, the Christian church.
He done it.
Corral.
He done.
Does good work too.
He done, I know he done the Christmas church, I don't know.
Seven Maggities too, I think.
Yes, and that here, yes.
Have a motion, but I do continue with Lex Ladder. Did you do work for the city, uh, on both projects, on both bids that we had?
They already did, they sell it.
Twelve, one, and seven, something like that.
Yeah, it was somewhere, somewhere in Walmart, twelve, twelve, seven, eleven, eleven, cause we need to do it.
Maybe that.
Amendment, a budget, a daily motion for, just going, it's, turn that on.
What about the, or sidewalk over near by PCS really, where she's building that, there's a really bad place there that needs to be.
We, that was something we thought we would discuss with her on, on the sale of the project, and see what we could work out there on that, on the sidewalk. We'll get with HK and find out about that, and we'll go selling it, and then maybe we'll just try and see if, maybe we can work out there with those sidewalks.
Well, I second your motion, go out.
I'll do it, I wonder.
It is.
I second it all, favor. Any opposed?
Okay, can you contact them, tell them to go ahead and do that?
Okay, one last thing, and I almost forgot this, and it's really important. Again, I'm laying up there. Anything I forbid tonight or don't forbid, it's Barry's fault.
Everybody, blah, blah.
Just, just like, you know, a lot of work, we have a motion for, uh, amend, amend the money, yeah.
I need an option to amend the budget.
Motion made.
Approximately around twenty thousand dollars for the sidewalk work. Second, all favor, any opposed? Okay, as you all know, this water tank thing has been going on for a long time. Started way back, I think, when I come on board as mayor, was when we actually started, you know, putting into all the paperwork and trying to get this done. The cost at that time was one point two million to replace the power that we're putting at, uh, fifty three, that was the cost. Then we dropped the funds, you know, we had, uh, pretty much all of it that had been, um, great. Well, eight hundred eighty-seven thousand, I believe, we had granted, and then we had money left that we would put in from our, uh, ARBA money, we had to finish, we had to, we would finish the rest of it. In the meantime, after all this has went on, we had to have archaeology survey. All this that comes up, that belongs to all this, so we had that done. We actually got a grant that paid for that to be done for the survey, so the city wasn't out any money there. But then we had to, when that comes back up after that long period, it has to be redid. So the bid came in at an extra three hundred fifty-two thousand dollars. But don't shake your head yet, don't hide. We applied for KIA grant, and they really weren't sure if they would, if they would go for it or not, because it's quite a bid and increase. They got a letter this week, they have approved those funds for the extra. They've signed the letter, I went in yesterday and signed it at the ad with Judy. And here's the thing, we've been approved for it, she said it'll probably be made sometime before they did the final paperwork, uh, approved and started, but, um, we do have the approval letter. We can sign to accept the bid and go ahead, prevent we get started. Assuming that we are gonna still get that, because whether we get that or not, we've got to do the water tank. If we don't go ahead and sign that and get them started and wait for this, and next start is another couple weeks out. So my thoughts are on it, go ahead, we've got the letter of approval. Go ahead and sign the contract for them to get started, so they can get the paperwork rolling on this. It's still coming up, and it's good stuff out there, it's under six months for some other reason, and...
If you're in the winter, yeah.
Yeah, and we've been approved for it, got everything in writing, this has not been signed off of. KIA and from us and the ad, and an email saying that we are approved, that you should go and sign off on, on the rest of the committee. So I said, I think that we should just go ahead and sign the, to get started, and then, uh...
We're back in business again.
That, you know, that's...
I agree, I mean, let's get this going before they go up on. Another six months, it might be.
That's right.
You know, I am a thank you, but, but.
When the election's down, then it's...
One, the contract.
I, I think it's May, uh, is when they plan to get started on it. It's, I think it was, uh, yes, I read it on here, it would, uh, construction would start, sorry, June the first twenty-four, and expected to end June first of twenty-five. Um, the bid is starting on twenty-four, so there you go. You know, they were to prolong that, and we're sitting there waiting on, then that bid could go up again. But we've been approved for it, they're saying they're giving us all the three hundred fifty-two thousand, so I think we need to get rolling on it. Just wait until they come in.
Agree.
So, anyway.
Yeah, you do, you need a motion that took, to sign.
Sign on that, maybe?
So, motion to the fore.
Yeah, I need a motion to move forward on the water tank project.
Motion to move forward.
And all favor, any opposed? So if we get that done, that, that's a big accomplishment, and looks like we're being favored there for the funds, and that's a big, a deal, I think.
Yeah, let's get the big ones covered.
Yeah, so, uh, I said they so used to not get too much water pressure living, hit prime, bust the pipes. They're gonna get too much pressure.
Yeah.
I know a lot of them are already going through.
Anyway, it should be a, a big difference once that. Even after your funny thing, Neil, you got anything, maybe? Oh, you wanna talk about that? You want us to?
I'll just, I'll just, this is probably my last council meeting, I really, thank y'all for letting me be a part of this.
Neil's leaving us.
Oh, again?
Yeah. It's time for the Northwest for vacation, seeing what, seeing what kids.
You know, you can come back after vacations.
Yeah, you can come back.
Yeah, I'll be back, but, uh, just gonna drag your wife with me, you know, tuck it out, she's gonna, she's gonna get more time. She's gonna start, uh, start a little bit.
So I think Megan is quite projecting the work to make.
Enjoy yourself.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, congratulations, and wish you well.
Thank you.
Keep showing us what you eat.
That's new. I'm watching to keep watching my face to pay you.
He's done a lot of good things, he's honored the thanks for the city and, um...
I'm gonna get May sixteenth, it's the last council meeting, that's the next council.
Oh, really? That's Tuesday.
May sixteenth, Thursday?
Really?
Hey, hey.
So, so you got to come back?
Okay, I thought, well, I wasn't thrown, I was in till twenty-three, got here, didn't I? Yeah, okay, I'll be back.
I wrote the surprise.
But anyways, so Phil's done an excellent job, we're gonna miss all the knowledge and stuff that he brings to the city.
I appreciate you.
And he's, uh, he's taking care of our website and putting off our pictures out there, makes us look famous, and, you know, we, we did have some famous people. Did y'all know that a movie's been shot in Russell County? And one, of course, one was at the cemetery, one was over here on Long Island Oak. Fire department had two or three, three people, I think, that was involved, that four that is part of the, in the scene, and, uh, Jeff and Megan, uh, also got to become movie stars. And so hopefully, we don't know how long it'll be before it's all put together, but it's, uh, very interesting. From everything I've heard about it.
December.
I started coming around, I'm like, oh, I'm ready to get rid.
But they did say that one of us, that was the point is ready to preview, and to let us on, give the city, with the preview of it, so. Anyway, a lot, a lot of people in from here, I mean, a lot of people from Los Angeles, they were from, you might have watched Dance Moms. The, the, one of those girls in the car was, uh, she's on Dance Moms, and then one of the staff, yeah, was from, uh, there's a lot of stuffs in, uh, in Los Angeles, so, yeah, it was, it was pretty fancy in Jamestown, so.
Have we wound up in this anyway, do you know?
It started about a year ago. They started coming around talking, wanting to do that. And I tell you, the guy, I talked to the guy, that was the, this that guy from Los Angeles, uh, actually ended up taking on, they were parked at, at the Christian church, I took them back up there when they were done. And he, uh, they really, really bragged on everybody that Delvin here, that it was a great place, one of his favorite places that they does shoot. He said that he does lots of different, uh, scenes. I think he's in some of the Marvel stuffs and stuff, but he said, I, I'm gonna recommend this area to, to companies that I deal with. So, you know, it's pretty, uh, it's pretty awesome, and they, you know.
Is it the same, I saw a group up there at the end of Main Street there, Russell Springs, at the Palm Shop there, about four ways off of the end of Main Street, and they were filming, and, 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 I was going to lunch the other day, and came down, so, is that the same?
They, they had a lot of, they, I know they were going to Stevens Park, they had seen there, Krill's World, they had two or three scenes up in Krill's World. Maybe in a, a Ryden Stables somewhere, the car crash was here, the cemetery scene was here in Jamestown, so. I don't know, but it just seemed very interesting, what I seen of it, I'm anxious to see it. I think they did, same people that did Game Changer.
Yes.
Game Changers that we showed here at that park a few years back, and so, same group, I think, that did that. Anyway, that's all I have. Nobody else have anything, any motion to dismiss?
Motion to adjourn.
All favor? Any opposed? Stay here all night. Thank you all.